Let's introduce to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Uh, Lawson.
Here.
Buns.
Present.
Wyatt.
Here.
And Sewell and Reacher are both absent and excused.
Uh, the motion approved the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion to approve the consent agenda which includes the fact that we'll only be one meeting in December and that'll be December eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, committee reports. Gail, Personnel, Admin, Finance Committee of October twenty-third.
Okay. First item on discussion was the deputy city clerk position. Um, we had two applicants and we did interview one and so the position was offered to Michelle Chocot which we already proved that and today was her first, first day on the job, so we welcome her. Um, the next item was the police chief in employment contract and um, commented that the police chief is not part of the union like the other full-time officers. And um, this is kind of a protection for the chief. Um, but there's council changes in there. Um, so anyway, it has been sent to um, to Heather and then um, we'll probably have Georgia Pry report here a little bit later on as to what the, the status is on that, but the uh, committee did recommend um, approval or to send a council for approval. Uh, next was a police chief, or no, police officer wage. Um, Officer Paul had left to take the job when he wasn't here when we did a wage increase and so he was asking for the wage increase and then also retro pay, pay, pay back to when he came back in March. The committee recommended that we do the pay increase and then he gets retro pay back to July first. And I believe, and that's on tonight's agenda. Next was moving a part-time police officer to full-time and this would be um, when she gets uh, done with the police academy which is gonna be the middle of December, I believe.
December fifteenth.
Okay, yep. And so when she comes back, she's already been working thirty-six hours a week, um, but this then just um, she will not be taking the um, city's insurance because she'll just still be on her partner's. But um, gives her some of the other benefits um, of, of full-time employee and not planning then on filling that part-time position. So, um, the committee recommended to go ahead and move her from full-time um, when she completes the academy and that is also on tonight's agenda. Uh, next we had um, from a representative from Liberty National Global Life Insurance and they did a, a presentation on some of the products that, that they have available and it lists them there. Main thing is to know that there is no cost to the city for this um, and employees can decide to either um, opt into it or um, or not. Um, this is just us giving um, the advan- or the um, possibility to the employee. So there's no charge to um, to the city.
So.
And um, and after that, we adjourn the meeting.
And Gail, any questions for Gail? Uh, no public hearings. Item A, discussion, presentation discussion, possible action to approve next steps for the community broadband action network in the city of Hudson collaboration. What you got for the floor, Curtis?
All right. Well, in efforts to keep this to twelve minutes, I'll sit down. So uh, the discussion was reopened as a introductory wise. I'm Curtis Dean and Seavent Solutions. It's Todd Kukop, also Seavent Solutions. And uh, this discussion got reopened after the study this spring, this past spring. You had a provider by the name of Nexly say, "We're gonna build fiber in Hudson." Great. All the other actions stopped at that time. We hadn't heard anything. So Chrissy said, "Can you reach out to them?" I did. "Oh, we're actually not gonna build fiber to the home in Hudson." Uh, our economic priorities are to do these other areas where they got grant money. So with that, that kinda changed the equation. So we kinda dusted off some of the ideas of the, the work that we proposed last year that actually we never did. And said, "Okay, what can we do now knowing this has happened to get fiber into the city of Hudson?" So met with that working group that we had and they suggested we come and talk to the council about what we're gonna do. So you can go to the next slide there. One of the things we outlined at that uh, at that committee member meeting is that um, a good possible first action would be to go ahead and formally seat a utility board. This does not mean you necessarily are going to build a utility because I don't think that's really what anybody wants. It would give you the ability to do that if you wanted to, but that's likely not what you want. The idea, idea behind having a utility board is they can be kind of your, for lack of a better term, watchdog over the providers in town and they can also be there as um, you know, if this, if we're, a new provider is attracted to kind of work with them and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to. So this was a step that, that it seemed there was a consensus of the working group that that would be a, a good thing to do. The tasks that have to be done to do that, which we would be offering help with are to identify potential board members in the community. And um, to identify first of all, what, what would be the city's priority for that board? What do you want them to do? What kind of people do you want? Do you want, you know, the typical, "We want an attorney, we want a banker, we want these people." Identify what your priorities are for the board as far as the play, uh, the uh, membership. Then we help identify and recruit those utility board candidates. Um, the mayor would actually make the appointments. So the, we would assist the mayor as needed to help with those decisions, while it would still be the mayor's decision. We would then after the board, utility board has been selected and seated, then Todd and I would basically conduct training with them. And we'll, we'll create the, kind of the training regimen based on what your priorities were for what that board will do. But also teach them on just the board uti- uh, utility board one oh one on the news and don'ts and all that stuff. And then um, so that's kind of step one. Um, uh, we're proposing, sorry it's such small print here, but uh, the cost for that, for us to do that would be twenty-seven fifty and that, any, and then it'd be one twenty-five per hour for anything over twenty-two hours. We think twenty-two hours will cover it. So that's that, that first step. There you go. It's even, it's even zoomier for old men like me.
Zoom here, does that work?
So that's, that's, that's a, a first step that we would be talking about. We can go to the next slide. Decision path chart uh, for the city. And we, we went over this at the working group meeting and this basically lays out from where you are today, all the different things and paths you could take. The path that we're talking about, uh, utility board path is kind of in that top box. That's a, you're gonna have a utility board that's gonna make some decisions about these other things that are gonna happen. We're not really talking about the status quo. That's, don't do anything, stop, send us home and just hope somebody comes into town. We're really not talking about a public-only solution, building Cedar Falls like utility or like Waterloo is doing. Uh, we've had a little bit of discussion about a private, uh, public partnership where the city has a stake in a new fiber network and, and working with another provider, could be a private provider or could be another public entity. But that doesn't seem like there's a, you know, that's gonna require some outlays of cash. That doesn't sound like there's a real strong desire for it. So we're really talking about what I call a private-only solution, which is let's go out and find somebody who wants to serve uh, uh, this community. And Todd and I have been successful in getting this done in a couple of other cases just by going out to providers and shopping Hudson. So you can go to the next slide. So to that new provider recruitment, as I call it, you got a couple of different ways you could go. Option one I laid out here is to do a more formal process, a request for interest or information, RFI, to identify one or more providers that would be interested in building fiber in Hudson at their cost. With potentially some city involvement on a minor level, but certainly um, they would be in charge of it. They would own it, they would operate it, they'd be the provider. Within a reasonable timeframe. So to do that RFI process, we've done this now in six other communities. The cost is, uh, as you see there, about six thou- six thousand dollars plus any time over thirty-six hours. We don't tend to go over those on these projects. That's just um, because we've done enough of them now, we kinda know what it's gonna take. So that's a process and we would basically work with you, create this RFI, we'd go out, we would send it to multiple providers, it would be publicized publicly to any provider that's interested and they would then all essentially compete for your attention, for your invitation to come to town. And so that's one way to do it. The advantage of doing that is we might not think of somebody that, that, that might come out of the woodwork, so to speak. And you might actually have providers competing for who can do the best job and who will do the better, uh, be better for the community. And then you would have some decision to say, "You know, I like this provider, I think they're a better fit for the community than this provider." So.
The advantage of that is that going into the community has decided how it's gonna score, about how you're gonna evaluate. And so the providers are more likely to respond knowing what the ground game is as opposed to it being political. You know, and they don't really know what the rules are, so they're like, "I don't even know what they're gonna want. I don't know if I wanna get in to even start the conversation."
We did this successfully in Tamla and they actually had two different providers both step forward and say, "Yes, we wanna build in Tamla." And we went, they had a working group, we actually went and toured those two providers' facilities. Going into the tours, they felt really good about one, but after the touring, the second one, they came back and said, "Wow, they really get it." They understand how to serve people well. And they chose them and now that company's gonna be building fiber to the home in the Tamla. Option two is a little less expensive path, uh, but that would be where we basically do one-on-one outreach to providers that are likely to have an interest. I can tell you there's at least one provider out there that is interested in Hudson because they've asked me and I said, "Well, I'll tell you more after we go through the council meeting" about which way to go. This is a provider that has it present in Eastern Iowa. I don't wanna say their name in public, but um, very strong reputation. Very interested in expansion. Um, and um, they, they would likely, whether we did option two or option one, they would be one of the parties at the table expressing interest. So these are kind of the two different directions you could go on, on the provider recruitment process. And I think that's the last slide.
Nope, you got.
Oh boy.
One more. This is it.
What did I do? All right.
Oh, the one, yeah, after one's provided.
Oh yeah, yeah, sorry.
Then there would be, could be another phase where we actually help negotiate whatever that looks like, whether there's any incentive that they want. They don't wanna come to the council meeting with their handouts, so we can't go quietly behind the scenes and say, "What will it really take?"
Yeah.
Like, is it expedited permitting or work, whether the, you want us to see if it's feasible before you have to publicly ask for it? A lot of them, the, the companies don't wanna put their brand out into the public sector that they're asking for something. Then in reality, most of these are asking for something, just, it's not always financial. And so that's kinda how we've been able to facilitate some things happening.
It could be a simple, for example, it could be a provider that says, "Hey, Hudson's not big enough for us to have a full-time customer service center." Would the city be all right with customers dropping off payments there? Uh, that might be something as simple as that. Could be, um, would the city be interested in doing a mailing saying that we have selected this provider and they're kind of our, you know, our preferred provider or something? You'd work through all that if it's, you know, obviously there's legal entanglements you have to worry about getting into, but most of the time it's gonna be things like, can you make it easier for them to say yes by giving them accelerated permit, permitting? Can you uh, perhaps provide you uh, some use of any city property that's either not, not used or, you know, a cabinet in a park somewhere so they can not have to buy land to put a cabinet? Those are the sorts of things. It's all based on your priorities.
If we did the RFI process, we can do that on the front side. So actually, we asked them what they would like.
Yes.
So then they can't come back later with a bait and switch with you. That's kinda why we'd like the RFI process, because we just put all the cards on the table right out of the gate and say, "Why didn't you set our front?" You know, and go wait till the end and get her all, get us all excited and say, "Oh, by the way, now I need you."
Right, two million dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one of the reasons that Tamla picked the provider they did is that provider said, in the process of not only they are applying them, but in the following agreement, "We will have a customer service center in your town. We will have full-time staff there." The other provider would not commit to that until certain customer goals were reached. So that was a big deal to them. So, and of course, that's a town of twenty-six thousand. They have a little more leverage than you do, but um, those are the sorts of things that we can decide in a priority that we wanna try to get into an agreement, memorandum of understanding, whatever that exists between the city and that developer.
Probably for Hudson, you know, the priority will be on maintenance window, expectations of having employees within a region.
Yes.
You're gonna help them, they, they have to commit that you're in response times on how to do it.
Right.
I mean, you can't have employees that are just forty miles away.
Exactly. You gotta, they'd have the ability to fix problems and, I mean, you're trying to get a provider that's gonna do a better job than the ones you have or we wouldn't even start this process. So those are the little things that can make a provider be better for your citizens, which is what this is all about. So. Now I think I'm on the last slide.
No, I think that's it. Maybe.
Relative to the option one and the option two, is it required to do the RFI? Did prior to doing the option one or option two, or is it possible to take the option two where you said there is at least one entity that's interested and simply start with that and if that does not work out, then you go to the option which broadband it? And even, not even have to go through the whole RFI process?
You sure could do that, absolutely.
However, on the other side of that, then do we take the first available and not necessarily the rest?
Right, and, and also the time you spend in that negotiation with them. If it falls apart at the end, you're back to square one. As opposed to trying to pre-qualify those people.
So.
It, they'll throw out, if you had a local provider that didn't meet all of your expectations and you had all negotiations with a bigger provider that, you know, you're just setting yourself up for, "Why didn't you ask me what I could do?" I don't know that you have a local provider that wants to set the table at that, but it's like, "He asked me."
So, we do have a local provider, but not for a fiber provider. So that's one of my, I wrote down a couple of questions here. So that is one of my questions about how do we handle that when it's a local business here that we wanna continue to support? But it's a line of sight, you know, it's a.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I guess I don't know the best way around some of that because how do we send out a, even when you said send out a mail or saying, "This is our preferred provider." We've got a local one. You know, how do we say, "We want you to go out of town"? Any insight to any of that, how we?
I think that um, well, I think in that case, I think if you go option two where we just go and recruit like a one-on-one thing, I think you start with that provider. Find out where are they at in their evolution? Are they prepared to operate a fiber network? The early answer from that provider last year was they weren't.
Right.
But that provider did apply for money under the last round of Iowa broadband grants to build a fiber project. They did not get awarded, but they apparently are at least.
Interested.
Interested in moving to a fiber network. But of course, that would've made it a lot easier with the eighty percent funding. They're not gonna get any grant funding for inside Hudson. It's gonna be all out of pocket.
But it would only take us a few hours to take a scoring that we think most public entities would want. For factors to consider, because we've done it before, just run by your utility board and say, "Hey, before we go talk to somebody, yours will we think you're top five or six." Hard is my view of what questions to ask, such as for the local provider, what's your build-out capabilities?
Speaking of utility board, that's my next question. Do we have, okay, we just got rid of the utility board here.
Right.
We just had a vote.
The electric utility, yeah, yeah.
Can we do this and, and maybe it's if we do the RFI type of thing, under a mayor's appointed committee rather than an actual separate utility board? Because it would not be a, if we're looking at just a private interest, not a public funded anything.
You could, absolutely. The only time.
Better than the board. The board language starts to implicate I O code three eighty-eight and makes me nervous.
Right, and the board would be, if you ever built or operated your own network, then that board has to govern it.
Correct.
But you're not governing it.
We know we're not doing that.
You're not.
I don't know where the communications utility board comes into play, which is a separate ordinance.
Yes.
We had a communications board, which is still established, but we let all of the individuals lapse. There is nobody currently appointed to that.
And I don't know.
I think we talked about that a little.
Yeah, yeah. You have a pa- you have a paper utility and a utility board without people on it.
Right, we have an ordinance that provides for something like that.
Yeah, okay.
So potentially that's just an off.
Right. That would take a little bit more massaging.
Right. And then, um, two more. How successful have you been? You said, "Tell them what you were successful with this RFI process." Have there been other success stories around that that have resulted in?
But I, I, um, Fort Dodge was successful except they changed their mind at the last minute and decided to build their own fiber utility. We had three or four providers interested in building fiber to the home in Fort Dodge. Um, and that was the path that they were going to until a council meeting where the mayor said, "I think we should just do it ourselves." And everybody said, "Okay, let's just do it ourselves" and we immediately had to pivot.
I was gonna say, why? Because they had, they wanted to make more money off of it or what was their theory?
They felt it was better to have more local control. It was a matter of having.
It also means you have to have the ability to fix and repair it though.
Absolutely, and they do.
They're larger, but that means you've also gotta be able to manpower that.
Just how much do you know about fiber? I'm just kidding.
Nothing.
Well, here's the deal. Um, those people, it, it, systems that build fiber utilities have to go find those people. And generally, they're very successful. I mean, Waterloo, obviously much bigger, but they've been very successful. Honestly, they've poached a couple of their municipals in bringing in some of their keepers and out. But you're exactly right. You have to have the manpower you need to do it well and the skills it takes to do it well. And for, it, it's easier for a town in Fort Dodge to do that. But Ryback just down the road has operated a telecommunications utility for twenty years.
Webster City.
Webster City, right?
Webster City, we, we didn't get that far because Premier just said, "We're gonna come and build it."
But they said, so that was the power of the council just saying, "We're going to talk about it." So we had two communities, just by bringing it up and saying, "We're gonna do an RFI, we're gonna bring somebody else in." All of a sudden, says that, somebody just said, "No, you're not. I want that town."
Well, that's what you, with the media comment.
It took the council actually just taking some action in order to kind of stand up for the need.
We, and we just, we just went through the process in Carlel where they had had a provider that had been hemming and hawing about when and if and how they were gonna build there. And wouldn't really commit in a public way to it. And we did the RFI process and that made, forced their hand to say, "You know what? Okay, we are gonna do this. Here's when we're gonna start." And, and now they have made it publicly, they know to everybody that they're gonna build fiber there. So now they have a little bit of a stick in that. Public opinion could pivot on them if they don't follow through with what they told the city.
Last question. Are there other options, for example, um, there's things that are changing, obviously Waterloo's building their own. Is there an option for us to partner with Waterloo or for Waterloo to bring anything here? Or Cedar Falls Utilities who do have routes run past us? Especially now that there's new leadership in, especially Cedar Falls.
Well, I think that was where things began about a year ago, was a, a call to Waterloo, to Cedar Falls about, "Hey, could you guys build fiber in Hudson?" And they said, "No, we won't. We can't. It's outside of our primary service boundaries and there's not really a way for us to do it." We then said, "Well, if Hudson built a network and owned it, would you operate it for them?" And they said, "No, we wouldn't do that either. Our board doesn't want us to do that." They don't want us to run other people's networks for them. Waterloo is such, is such a case that they are, they're borrowing a lot of money to build a network in Waterloo. They can't borrow any more money to build a network anywhere else until that network is done and cash flow positive, which is gonna be a while. So you'd be talking about the number of years before they would get here, even if they had interest.
You're estimating the five, at one time you mentioned it might be five years before they're even ready.
It might be ten.
Yeah.
They don't have the fin- they don't have the finances lined up for what they are aiming to build.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna start and then they're gonna hope to get the financing to do the rest. So.
Yeah, Gail and I are in the way with Cedar Falls Utilities up there and asking those explicit questions.
Recently or last year?
Last year, yeah. It's not accurate that they can't provide services outside city limits. They can do that contractually under I O code. It's just.
Yeah. They can't borrow, they, the attorneys have said that they can't borrow any money to build outside city limits. A bond that they can't bond for.
That's gotta be true.
That, that, we don't agree with that, but all ours have put that down. And so we uh, were like, "Oh, okay, that's true."
You know, they are building a lot of areas where they have grant funding.
They got grant funding.
But they're using free cash to.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna get it here.
No.
All right. Thank you for answering my question.
And any other questions? I guess, you know, um, the direction would be, what do you, what would you like us to do next? And we can get to work on it. If you wanna skip the utility board for now and go right to just providing, uh, getting a new provider recruited, we can do that. If you wanna do the utility board and then, or you could hold the utility board and decide after this process whether you think you need one or not.
I would create like a task force.
Well, yeah, I would be more for a task force of volunteers, more involvement from the city council than creating another board. Then you have to do what we've gone through in the past. So, you know, my recommendation is we do it from this table. Including Chrissy and public works and stuff like that. I'd like to see uh, us go at this point with the option two. And then if we're unsuccessful there, we go with the one, we got the RFI on the backside. How does that feel to you two?
I'm fine, we're fine with that. Like I said, we've got a willing, potential willing participant, but we would start with that local company, I think.
Would you have discussions with, to see where they're at at this point?
And we should have, we could have an initial reaction out of them by the eighteenth of December?
Oh, I would think so, yeah.
I, I, I don't know that I would agree with that though.
I'd sooner go with option one.
I, I, especially for, you know, you're talking the difference of four or five thousand dollars here. Um, again, do we get the best or do we get the first available? You know what I mean?
I've got an objection going with one.
I, I don't think it's a matter of saving that couple of thousand dollars.
What, if we did go option two, how many hours are you thinking you would have?
Oh, I think you'd bring somebody to the table, probably maybe twenty.
So it'd be half of it, or a little bit more.
I think for option, we're better to go option one and have some opportunities to shop.
I agree.
And see what else is out there. See who gets interested or who wakes up from the dead and decides to do something that they should've done a long time ago.
Maybe, maybe even the provider that initially told you they would do fiber may realize, "If we don't get Hudson and commit to it now, we're gonna lose it."
Right.
So you'd be able to go and advise that entity that we've approved an option two and, "Oh, by the way, heads up, in case you wanna be included."
Personally, I think, I think if it were my vote right now, that I would say, "Let's see what we can get." I, I don't think it's a one and done. I think it's, it's kinda like applying for jobs. We don't want just one person. We want the best of everybody. We don't want first people always.
I got a motion to option one?
I'd second that.
Further discussion? Roll call.
All right, uh, Wyatt?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Buns?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried three zero.
You're approved for option one. Just coordinate with Chrissy.
We'll go get, I'll get you a letter of engagement.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep working with you guys and hopefully we'll, we'll bear some fruit here.
Hopefully, we'd like it by next week. Completely done.
And no more politics.
Curtis, Curtis, don't forget your, you had your.
Oh, thank you. My life is in that little statue. Or at least my brain is in that.
Bye, folks.
Thank you.
Uh, item B, presentation discussion action approved, resolution three one three four, resolution of approval for Liberty National implementation for the city of Hudson. And Greg is on the phone here in case anybody's got a question, but Gail kinda commented on what it was as part of the personnel committee meeting.
Hi Greg, thanks for holding on with us.
Hey, thanks for having me, guys. And I apologize for the background noise. So you know, I've got a large family, got fourteen kids.
We like your, we like your background noise preferable compared to what we were getting there for a little while.
So yeah, no, better than the other background I saw earlier. Uh, and so, you know, twelve or so at home and so, but uh, my name's Greg. I live by State Center. And I've been in, uh, marched down here in twenty-two years and I work for Liberty National. And um, you know, there are a lot of companies that provide benefits, uh, but honestly, there are some unique things to us that are gonna be different than other companies. One is uh, our customer service. We really strive for excellent customer service. I am not a one-and-done kind of a guy. Some companies uh, try to enroll once a year and come back, re-enroll them once a year. My goal, I'm very upfront with every business I work with, their city or school or nonprofit, is to build a relationship, is to know the people that I serve. Because I honestly do care about, uh, when someone's having a surgery or about that, asking out of the way. I stop them on a regular basis just to make sure things go okay. Not, not even business-wise, also business-wise, but, but more just relationships. I do care about keeping the peace. Um, I'm, I'm a pastor. I work at a church. I volunteer at church. I have seven families. I'm the guy that helps teach there. So that's one of the things, I think, that's a part of the customer service. I can have each employee that we serve, my personal cell phone number. And so my office is west of Illinois, but I'm out of State Center. I do not want to be working with companies and cities and counties and nonprofits as well as schools to pay out the sun. So what we do, we do bring in some of our benefits. And our goal is to provide them in an affordable way. And so Global Life is our parent company. They have more life insurance policies than anybody else in the country. A-rated, excellent financial ratings, which means we can pay out when people have an issue. That's the goal, is they buy something, we want to give them the help and get that. And that's why they call me instead of calling me at 100 numbers, like to file a claim for them. But Global Life, they sponsor the Cowboys and Rangers and sort of things, but we don't sponsor anything. And so we really, our goal is to add that savings on the employers we serve, the employees we serve. The first thing we do, I mean, literally one, there's a couple of things about us again that make us different. Number one, there is no minimum participation requirement by the employees as far as, there's no mandatory five employees, 10 employees. It's a cafeteria plan, so everything's completely optional. Number two, for all of our policies and prices, once someone signs up for a policy, the price will never change. And so that's the line of the policy, if we want to keep paying premiums, the price will not change. And then all of our policies are completely portable. If someone retires, needs to move away, the policy will go with them. The price still won't change, nor will the benefits change that go with that policy. We do offer every, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, just yell and say, hey, Greg got a question, that's okay. I'm okay with that. I get that a lot out, my kids have more, but I still get it. And so the first thing we do is we offer every employee two free things. And there literally is no catch, what's the catch? There is no catch. And they are completely free. And we offer them on behalf of the employer that we partner with. One is a $3,000 accidental death benefit for the employee. $3,000 accidental death benefit for their spouse, $1,000 for his extended child. And that's our one-year, it's a one-year policy. So if we come back every year to renew, those are renewed as well. We also have a discount card at no cost that saves on vision-inhering prescription drugs and chiropractic care. And that's good locally as well, nationwide. Our biggest providers for prescription drugs are going to be Walmart, Walgreens, Hyvea and New Care out here in Iowa. But if you're at Branson, I like Branson, if something happens down there, you can type in a zip code if you need a new provider. And those are completely free. I'm a Dutchman, I grew up in Pella. And so some folks turn it away, I still don't get it. It's free, at least the accidental death coverage, man, I just tell people, take it, it's free. And they don't want it, I'm like, that's okay, you don't have to have it if you don't want it. The next, what we do is we work with the employees and kind of do an ease-based approach. If they don't need it, we're not going to push them to buy it. Our goal is not to try and oversell anything or upsell. Our goal is to meet needs and honestly, my goal is to impact paychecks as little as possible, but still provide what the employee needs. And so we'll ask them, do you have life insurance? If they have enough life insurance, we go on to the next thing. Do you have a history of your family of cancer, history of heart issues? They say cancer, then we address the cancer. We have heart, we have this, the critical illness side of things. And so our goal is to help meet those, those needs that they have. Our term life is good with any other company out there. It's personal medical, it's what they offer. Our group term life is group rates. We can pretty much insure anybody under three different policies. And for all those policies, they're good until age 100. And most of them are paid up at age 65. If someone's like a higher risk, if they've got really bad medical issues, we can still insure them, but it's paid up in 20 years instead of age 65. But the nice thing is, like I said, that group term life, the employee as well as their spouse or their children are all, it's available to all of them. They'll get coverage until age 100, but it's paid up at age 65. The first $50,000 of coverage on the employee is pre-taxable. So it saves them about 25%. Our cancer plan is also a great policy, it's a lifelong policy. And we have some unique benefits as well. And so as long as the employee pays the premiums, they've got coverage for themselves or their family. And I've had some people that have found that their kids have a long individual plan as well. But we've got a first occurrence pattern. They find out they have cancer, they get a documentation, they get a check for $3,500. We reimburse for chemo, for radiation, hospital confinement, transportation. If the doctor says he can fly to Arizona, we'll fly them and gas down and pay for the hotel where they're there.
Hey Greg?
As long as the doctor says.
Greg?
Yes, sir.
I got to cut you off, we're running out of time here. Appreciate all the information. I'm sure that'll be all the packets once we approve you for coming in here. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Lawson?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Bunz?
Hi.
All right, motion carried three zero.
Thanks Greg, you're approved and Chrissy will just get in contact with you and do any paperwork necessary.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Don't expect that much of a sales pitch. Won't let you cut me off.
Item C?
Yes.
Discussion, action, approve resolution 3135, resolution approving the transfer of funds for October 2023. Presume this is a normal standard?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right, Bunz?
Hi.
Lawson?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
All right, motion carried three zero.
Item D, discussion, action, approve resolution 3136, resolution setting wages for city employee for the City of Hudson, Iowa for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And this is as Gail had mentioned, just Paul back to July 1st. Motion approved?
So moved.
There you go, second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
When can we come back?
In March.
In March. We asked for it retro back into March and what we recommended out of council or on committee was to go with July 1st. Roll call.
Bunz?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Lawson?
Hi.
Motion carried three zero.
Item E, discussion, action, approve resolution 3137, a resolution for approval